Good evening and welcome to our January 8th regular and organizational school board meeting. At this time, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, I'd like to ask that you remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like us to share a moment of silence for Elliot Hansen, Rosemont High School's student who passed away recently.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to establish quorum. I would like to ask Brandy to complete a roll call.
Here.
Here.
Magnusson.
Here.
Mohammed.
Here.
Vernig.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Brandy. Typically, the chairperson leads the oath of office, but as he has been re-elected as a clerk, I'll be facilitating the oath of office. I ask our elected board members Cory Johnson, Jackie Magnusson, and Anna Williams to please stand and take the oath of office. I would like to invite family members to the front to stand with you behind you here. Family members, you can move, stand behind. All right. I ask, I ask you to recite the following oath and repeat after me. Please raise your right hand. I, please indicate your name.
I, Anna Williams.
I, Jackie Magnusson.
I, Cory Johnson.
Having been elected to the office of the school board for independent school district 196.
Having been elected to the office of the school board for independent school district 196.
To hereby swear.
To hereby swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of school board member.
Of school board member.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sakoudin, for leading us in that. And thank you to everyone who came here and to all the families who came to join us for this occasion. Next on the agenda is our approval of the agenda. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda today. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
Motion to approve.
I heard a motion by Jackie and a second by Bianca. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a six-zero vote. For those that don't know, every January, school boards are required to have an organizational meeting. And part of that organizational meeting is to elect our officers. How we're going to do it today is that I will start with each board officer position. I will ask for a nomination. I will call for nominations. I will give plenty of opportunity for a nomination. If there's only one nomination, that member will be elected by acclamation. If we have more than one person nominated for a position, we will take a roll call vote. Any questions from board members? All right. Then at this time, I would like to ask for nominations for chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Cory Johnson for chair.
Thank you. Heard Cory Johnson myself nominate for chair. Are there any other nominations for chairperson? Are there other nominations for chairperson? Are there other nominations for chairperson? Nominations, hearing none, I will close nominations as there was only one person nominated for chairperson. That person is elected by acclamation. I will be serving as chairperson for the next year. Thank you. Now, I would like to open up nominations for vice-chairperson. Is there a nomination for vice-chairperson?
Yes, I would like to nominate Sachin Isaac as vice-chair.
You're in nomination for Sachin Isaacs for vice-chairperson. Is there another nomination for vice-chairperson? Are there other nominations for vice-chairperson? Are there other nominations for vice-chairperson? Hearing no further nominations, I will close the nominations as there was only one, one person nominated for the office of vice-chairperson, Sachin Isaacs is, is serving as vice-chairperson for the year 2024. All right. I will now open up nominations for the role of clerk. Art.
I'd like to nominate Jackie Magnusson.
There's a nomination for Jackie Magnusson. Are there other nominations for the role of clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry, is that clerk?
This was clerk.
I jumped ahead on that one. I was gonna do treasurer, sorry.
Are you withdrawing nomination?
I am withdrawing that nomination.
Okay.
Unless Jackie wants to change roles.
There is no nomination for clerk right now. So I will ask for nominations for clerk.
I'd like to nominate Anna Williams for clerk.
Nomination of Anna Williams for clerk. Are there any other nominations for clerk? Are there other nominations for clerk? Are there other nominations for clerk? Hearing none, I will close the nominations as there was only one board member nominated for the office of clerk. Anna Williams is elected to the position of clerk for 2024 by acclamation. Congratulations. I will now open up the nominations for treasurer. Are there any nominations for treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Jackie Magnusson.
Art Coulson would like to nominate Jackie Magnusson. Are there other nominations for treasurer?
Yes, I would like to nominate Sakoudin Mohammed.
And there's another nomination for Sakoudin Mohammed for treasurer. Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Hearing none, I will close the nominations for treasurer. And we will take a roll call vote on this one since we do have two people nominated. So I was gonna try to do it alphabetically, but I will screw that up. So I'm just gonna go down the table. So Bianca.
Sakoudin Mohammed.
Oh, yeah, and thank you. Just said the name of the person you'd like to nominate. Okay, Sakoudin? I'm sorry, Art, go ahead.
Jackie Magnusson.
One for Jackie. Cory Johnson votes for Sakoudin. Sakoudin? You get a vote.
Yeah, vote for myself.
Jackie?
And I'll vote for myself, Jackie Magnusson.
Excellent. And Anna?
Sakoudin Mohammed.
Awesome. Having four votes for Sakoudin Mohammed for treasurer and two votes for Jackie Magnusson, Sakoudin is elected treasurer for 2024. Congratulations. Excellent. Having all of our nominations done for 2024, I'd like to move into one of our most favorite celebratory parts of our board meeting agenda, and that is our recognition section. I would like to call up and welcome Assistant Principal Calvin Kiesling to the podium to discuss our youth and music marching band champions, Rosemont High School Ayesha Abdulahi, Gabby Hoover, Adonis Katima, and Mateo Pasillas. And I should've let you say the names because I guarantee I butchered them, and my apologies upfront.
All right. Thank you, Chair Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. As you said, my name is Calvin Kiesling. I'm the assistant principal at Rosemont High School in charge of our school's visual and performing arts program. It's my pleasure to speak to you on behalf of our school's visual and performing arts programs, and especially to the past decade of success, or more than decades, right? Decades of success that our Rosemont High School marching band has had. Over the years, our school has grown, and so has our band and its success. This year, our band had an impressive season. It started with being named grand champion at the Minnesota State Fair Band Competition for the 12th time out of 13 times, and continued with winning first in class and grand champion at the Eastview Marching Band Festival and the Festival of Bands in Sioux Falls, winning first in class and being named grand champion at Bands of America's Regional Finals in Des Moines, Iowa, as well as fifth place overall and second in class in Band of America's Superregional in St. Louis, Missouri. The success of our band is a result of many factors, but I'd like to name a few key factors for you. The first is our district's commitment to band for all. This commitment has made it so that every elementary, middle, and high school student who attends our district has the opportunity, regardless of means, to participate in band. The second reason is the support of parents, guardians, and family members for our students' learning to play instruments. Our Rosemont High School marching band of 235 students is a success today because of love, the love, support, and vision of their parents and guardians. The third is the leadership and direction of our instrumental music staff at RHS. We have four amazing directors who are here with us tonight. If they could please stand, Taylor Eliason, Calvin Lepetsky, Scott Palmer, and Leon Sieve. They work tirelessly to design, build, rehearse, tune, improve, and perform the marching band show throughout the season, and they do this along with the assistance of over a dozen section instructors and coaches. The fourth factor is the students themselves. Students have put in over 200 hours of rehearsal time, not counting sectional time, performance time, and individual practice since July. Their dedication, strong work ethic, and commitment to the band community has helped them grow in their abilities and success as an overall ensemble. Now, to speak specifically to the accomplishments of the band here tonight. This is, this year, RHS marching band competed in the 18th Annual Youth and Music Championships, which is both a state tournament for marching bands and a championship festival that includes competition for bands from our neighboring states. The performance of "Please Be Seated" by the RHS band earned them the title of Minnesota State Champions in 4A, Class 4A Champions, where bands from five states were represented, and Grand Champions of the event. The band also received awards for outstanding music, outstanding general effect, and outstanding color guard. This recognition marks the 16th time out of 18 years that Rosemont has been first in the state and grand champions. At Rosemont High School, we are fortunate to have four gifted student leaders who guide and support their marching bandmates in achieving success. They did an outstanding job this season. They are our drum majors. They embody the Irish way and our core values and are here to represent the marching band this evening. They are Ayesha Abdulahi, Gabby Hoover, Adonis Katima, and Mateo Pasillas. It is my pleasure to present them to you on behalf of the Rosemont High School marching band for your recognition of their achievement for being first in the state and having received the title of grand champions at the Youth and Music Music Championships on October 14th.
Amazing job, congratulations. Fantastic job, congratulations. Thanks for being here. Amazing job, congratulations. Extraordinary. Thanks so much for being here.
Congratulations, you guys. Congrats. Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right. Wonderful. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Thank you. Congratulations and good luck to the District 196 High School students who qualified for the state debate tournament, which will be held January 12th and 13th at the University of Minnesota. And congratulations to school board member Bianca Vernig, who won a special election to be the new representative for House District 52B. Will miss having you as an advocate for District 196 on the board, but hope to work closely in your new role to secure the funding and support from the state. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is special communication request. We don't have anyone signed up for special communication requests tonight, so that brings us to our consent agenda. We have 19 items on our consent agenda tonight. They include: school board committee assignments and appointments for 2024, minutes of December 11th, 2023 special school board meeting, the minutes of December 11th, 2023 regular school board meeting, gifts, grants, summary of claims for November 2023, schedule of investments for November 2023, revenues and expenditures report for November 2023, treasures report for November for 2023, manual signatures on checks over $100,000, 2024-25 Apple Valley High School window replacement, US Bank authorized representative certificate, FY24 teacher mentorship and retention of effective teachers grant, TMRG agreement, personnel employment agreements, request to hire a nonlicensed administrator, superintendent search services, requests for proposal, pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time employees, and pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time community education employees. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to remove today? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Bianca, second from Sakoudin. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a six-zero vote. Next, I will go into reports, and I would like to welcome Ed Hire and Julie Biersack to the podium to discuss our learning and technology framework.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the board. I'd like to thank you, first of all, for allowing us to share our journey on how technology and learning have converged over the past 10 years. So first of all, I'm gonna take us back to 2013 when Steve Trowan, who's in the audience tonight, approached me and, and wanted to talk about how technology is going to play a role in education going forward. At that point, we were very, very much a computer lab district. Students had to schedule time to get, get on a computer and so forth. Lots of districts were doing one-to-ones around us, and so we wanted to talk about what does that look like for us? And so from that, there was a small committee formed with teaching and learning representatives, technology department, as well as some building administrators, to talk about and brainstorm what does techno, what role will technology play in instruction going forward? Because we knew that obviously, technology is just going to become more and more invasive in people's lives and, and something that we need to embrace. And so in those discussions, we talked about, okay, how do we make sure that what we're going to do is going to be beneficial? So we started a beta program where we, through a process of teachers applying, selected just under 50 classrooms where we provided devices in a one-to-one environment. And it, there was also a separate process that determined what that device was, was going to be, which ultimately ended up being an iPad. At that time, actually, an iPad mini. And so that beta program was run for the 2014-2015 school year. And through that process, and the teachers had agreed to provide feedback as to what worked, what didn't work, how's it going to look? And through that process, we developed, or teaching and learning, in working with those teachers, developed the technology and learning, learning and technology framework, which Julie is going to talk about here in just a second, which is really the core of everything we do at this point. So then, once that framework was developed, we determined we're gonna need to go into a one-to-one environment, and that's when the 2015 Capital Projects levy was put, put to the voters and approved. And so I am going to turn it over to Julie now to talk about the learning and technology framework.
Thank you. So the learning and technology framework was created back from our committee in 2013, and I really truly feel that as technology has changed throughout our, throughout these last 10 years, that it has continuously been a grounding work that we can constantly go back to and really frames us in how we approach this tool in the classroom. And so with our technology framework, we have four key pieces. One, we have access and analyze information. It allows students to critically think about information in a really safe setting, allowing us to take in databases that show students the opportunity to learn and to grow in all of their thinking. We also have the opportunity to innovate, create, and publish. What we truly believe in our district is that instruction drives our technology decisions. We have digital resource teachers in all of our secondary buildings, and we have them amongst our elementary buildings, and they get to go meet with teachers and constantly discuss how are we going to use this tool for learning? And then we have our learners creating and publishing and presenting to authentic audiences. Go into an elementary school, and you're gonna see fourth grade learners with their buddy class in first grade, and the first graders are super excited, showing the ebook that they created based on a unit of study of their learning. We also have the, the opportunity for students to collaborate and communicate. This uplifts student voice. It allows them to communicate in ways that they've never been able to before. And then finally, we have our digital citizenship. And so this is a framework that I've gotten to show teachers every year. And what I constantly remind them to is that digital citizenship is a piece of the puzzle, but really, it's the foundation of everything we do. With the opportunity that we have, we want to have continuous, authentic conversations about the decisions and behavior. So the sentence that we constantly tell our learners is, is that they are conscious consumers and positive contributors in our digital world, and they get to think about that every time they touch that device. And so how have we then been able to take this and bring it to life in the classroom? So the instructional benefits that have come out of this, first of all, we have provided opportunity for all students. I taught second grade, and when I first came in the district, we tried really hard to find time to get our students into the computer lab, which was often being used by a lot of teachers that wanted students to have the chance to create in a digital platform. Then I was able to have five iPads in my classroom, which was wonderful, and I got students to be able to get thinking, but not all students to the capacity they could. Now we have one-to-one devices in our classroom, and all students are able to use this opportunity. We truly believe that is what's good for one can be good for all, and I get to see that played out in so many ways in the classroom. We also have had a two, opportunity to amplify student voice. So yes, students have a chance to collaborate and talk to one another, and that still happens with the device and the tool that they're working with. One really beautiful way that I got to see a student's voice amplified was when I was teaching second grade, I had a student that hadn't talked all year. I had heard her voice one-on-one, but my class hadn't. And so we were able, the way we structured literacy is the students were off learning and, learning and taking in information, and every single day, our class came together and there was a share time. And one day, she came up to me and she whispered, "Can I share?" And I tried to keep my face very calm and mellow, and I was like, "Yes, absolutely. Today, please share." She came up, she brought her iPad, and she pushed play, and for the first time, the rest of the class heard her voice. And it was a really magical, beautiful experience, and it really opened her up for an opportunity to share her voice as well, and that continued to flow. And the class was like, "Wow." And so really, this is providing opportunities that we haven't seen before in the classroom. We also believe that the iPad is one of multiple tools in our ecosystem of learning. We have so many amazing tools that are provided for our learners, and in no way do we say, "Hey, now that we're one-to-one, I want to see it out all the time." I constantly remind teachers and coaches, this is about balance. We still want students to write their scientific thinking in notebooks. I still wanna see mathematicians have manipulatives in their hand to share their learning, and we have this additional opportunity to share learning with our iPads, too. So you might walk into a school and see students that have made amazing posters on the water cycle with a QR code next to it that has their voice, that other learners can come by, scan the QR code, and hear them share their learning. It's an opportunity for balance, and that's a continuous word I always am reminding all of our levels of teachers and students. One of the other opportunities is that what we're doing with technology and how we're using is gonna adapt and change. We have seen that in the last year with AI, right? It's continuously changing, and more and more is coming at us. But here's what's not gonna change: technology's in our world. And so we know and we adapt with that, and we know that it's not going away. And so what I constantly remind myself is, recently, I was part of a group of people where someone shared about the class of 2036. That's our kindergartners. I personally have a kindergartner in the district. They're graduating in 2036, and it's not our responsibility to prepare them for 2024. It's our responsibility to prepare them for the 2036 world. And so that's what we have to constantly think about, and that's what's going through our minds as we think about our learners and as we're preparing them for the world that they're gonna graduate into. And so that's why we continue to strive to improve how we're gonna be using this device and tool. Finally, there is a quote that I saw at the Minnesota Zoo, and I put it up in my classroom. It's by Benjamin Franklin, and it says, "Tell me and I forget. Teach me and I may remember. Involve me and I will learn." Students want to create. Students love to take what they've learned and to make it into something more and something with their voice. And so what we are able to see and what we can provide with this digital tool is a chance for our students to create. And I could keep talking on and on about all the ways we've been able to do that, but instead, I'm gonna let two learners show you today in a video. A couple things I want to let you know about this video. Two fifth graders were learning about simple machines in the classroom. And at the end of the unit, they were gonna share what they had learned. They were asked to share what they had learned. They had an idea, so they went up to their teacher and they said, "We really want to show our learning using the iPad." And the teacher is like, "Okay, like, tell me how you wanna use it, what you're gonna do." And so they explained it, and he's like, "Okay, here's the deal. That's a lot." And he said, "If you want to do that, I want you to write down a plan. I want you to have a map to show all of your thinking, and I want you to bring that to life." And so they did that. And so what you're about to see, we call app-smashing. So they took three different apps. They took GradBand, iMovie, and Stop Motion. And they created something pretty magical that I'm excited to share with you today. And so while you're watching, just know that they had a lot of learning from the simple machine. And so I did have to cut it down. It was five minutes originally, so I cut it down to something smaller so you can see what they were able to do with it. But I want you to watch, and I want you to see and think about our framework and how it came to life. And I'll let you, let them tell the rest of the story.
Wait, you guys, you're not supposed to be in this stop motion. Oh, hey there. Hello, everyone. It's me, Brody, but Lego form. And my assistant, Mr. Hand, totally not the real Brody. Today, this video is about simple machines. And I did my best to make them out of Lego. Anyway, our first simple machine is the lever. Anyway, the three main parts of the lever is the fulcrum, the load, and the effort. The closer the fulcrum is to the load, the less effort you have to use. Here is our lever. In this case of the lever, the big guy on the right is the load. This is the fulcrum. This is the effort where I'm gonna push down. See? Now I move the fulcrum toward the load. Do you think anything will change? Now, my movie is over. Time to go on to Aiden. Thank you, Brody. There are a lot of simple machines that you use in our everyday life. Like a spoon. There are three classes of levers. Let's talk about first class. There's load, then effort, and the object that holds the bar is called the fulcrum. So that's all the simple machines. I hope you enjoyed. I gotta go. Brody's making his new movie. What did you just say? Nothing. Okay.
In that brief little two minutes, you're able to see students creating, being incredibly innovative, and having the opportunity to lift up their voice. The final thing I'll say about that experience is that it was two of the quieter kids in the classroom, and when they were done sharing it with the class, so they presented it, everyone paused, and they all looked at each other, and they stood up, and they gave those two boys a standing ovation, which was incredibly well-deserved. And so this is how we've been able to bring iPads to life in our classrooms.
All right. First of all, I really should've thought how we ordered these slides, because now I gotta follow that. All right. So the, just to finish up real quickly, I just wanna talk about the Capital Projects levy and how we're using those funds over the past eight years to support everything that Julie just presented. So in 2015, there was an approved referendum at, for 10 years, it was at $50 million, so basically five million a year, at least in year one, to support one-to-one devices. And again, that was iPads for grades four through 12, with a three-year replacement cycle. Initially, we didn't know how long these devices would last. We've never had devices in students' hands 24/7, and so we did a three-year replacement cycle with a three-year rollout as well. In 2020, when the pandemic hit, we had just completed our rollout of devices to grades four through 12 about a year earlier, so we were well-equipped for that, fortunately. Grades K through 3, we had to help out that first May through, or I'm sorry, March through May in 2020 with other devices if they needed it. And then we moved them to the one-to-one as well, so we are now K12, one-to-one. And we were able to support that by moving to a four-year replacement cycle, so the cost to do that was very minimal. Laptops and iPads for teachers. We, we replaced all the desktops in classrooms with, with laptops as well as iPads, so they had the same tool as the students did. the same tool as the students did. And the laptops allowed for mobility, so they could go to professional development courses that Teaching and Learning puts on. And it really changed the landscape of how we could do PD. And then in the classroom as well, they can move around the classroom with their devices, project wirelessly now in most of our classrooms. So it frees the teacher up to be out where they need to be is with the students rather than tethered to a spot in the front of the classroom. Software and databases, without that, these devices would be just that. They would just be devices. And so the software that Julie referenced, that the students use to create those videos, all of that is purchased with these dollars. So the students have access to those tools that they can create as well as to content so they can do their research and learn that way as well. One of the things that I do want to point out, when we were going through this process back in 2013 through 2015, trying to figure out how to do this, there was an overwhelming consensus that, from the larger committee, that we need to provide the support. There needs to be the support there in order for this to work. Teachers can't be the ones supporting all of these new devices. And so we set aside about 20% of the referendum for staffing, for tech support staffing. And so with that, we now have 14 and a half staff that are supported through these funds, 12 of them directly out in the buildings, and the other two and a half are at the district level, supporting it on the backend. And so that's been, that's been huge, as well as there's lots of support happening from existing tech support staff out in our buildings as well. Network infrastructure is critical to make sure all of this works. We went from, you know, under, less than 10,000 devices on the network to nearly 40,000 devices on the network, so we had to beef that up. And we just are completing the, an upgrade process right now, actually replacing all of our network switches and wireless at the secondary schools. And then finally, overseeing everything that you, that's above it here that I just listed off, is the Learning and Technology Frameworks Committee, which is, again, consists of teaching and learning folks, technology department folks, and representatives from all levels of our schools, elementary, middle, and high school. So where are we with this Capital Projects Levy? I referenced it early. We are currently in year eight of 10, with the levy set to expire at the end of the 2526 school year unless it gets renewed. All right. Thank you so much for allowing us to present. Appreciate it.
As this is a report, we do allow for questions. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Yes, Jackie, go ahead.
I have a quick comment. Superintendent Krieger and I were in a high school class at Eastview, a class of juniors and seniors who were getting ready to be teachers. And so part of their class was to be in classrooms and watch and participate with what was going on in classrooms. And so Superintendent Krieger was asking, what do we, should we do, and what should we change, and what are you concerned about? Well, one of their concerns about was younger kids having too much juice on the iPads. And they initially, their comment was, it has to be a balance. So just exactly what you said. It's all good stuff, and kids can do a lot of good stuff, but it has to be done in balance. I thought that was really sharp of our high school kids to see that and understand that, wait, kids need to write. And kids need to still know how to write, then they were telling us all the things that kids need to do. So thank you so much.
And I'll just add, I loved the video presentations, really came to life a little bit about what you're saying. I have a third grader and a fifth grader, and I am constantly blown away by what they showed me that they created in school. And the lessons and the stories and the frameworks they create, it's just amazing. So it's just a great tool to facilitate that learning. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next, we're going to move into the old business portion of our agenda, and I'd like to welcome Kaia Bruce to the podium for our second reading of connection preschool fees.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'm sharing with you tonight the second reading of the proposed connections preschool fee increases for the 2024-25 school year. These proposed fees are based on a sliding fee scale correlating to family income and size and reflect a 2.5% increase from the current year and rounded to the nearest dollar. These proposed fees are similar to those in surrounding districts. The annual income ranges are also updated to the current federal poverty guideline levels. This is an action item for tonight, so at this time, I kindly request your approval.
Thank you. As this is an action item, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Take it.
Motion by Sakoudin and a second by Jackie. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Seems pretty straightforward, and I think we got all of our questions during the first reading. So I've got a motion to approve by Sakoudin, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Next, I would like to welcome Danny DeSheen to the podium to go over the second reading of our final budget for fiscal year 2023-24.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. Tonight, District Administration presents the 2023-24 final budget for a section, second reading and action item. At the December 11th School Board meeting, the board was presented with a detailed summary of the final budget, including an overview of the various funds of the district and projected ending fund balances for the end of the 2023-24 school year. The budget version included in your board packet tonight, which includes the final draft of the budget book, is unchanged from what was presented at the December 11th Board meeting. So with tonight's reading, District Administration respectfully recommends the School Board approve the 2023-24 final budget.
Excellent. Thank you. Again, this is an action item tonight, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Heard a motion by Sakoudin, seconded by Bianca. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none. Since I will just make one comment, seeing as we have fuller attendance than we normally do, I would just like to again point out how amazing that budget book is you and your team put together. If any district resident has any questions about our budget, we have a large budget, it's very complex, there's different funds, but that budget book you put together every single year does a wonderful job about starting from the very top levels and breaking down our budget into the smallest levels. I just think transparency in our government is so important, and especially what our taxpayers, our funding, and that budget book does an excellent job at explaining that in concise manner for any resident or stakeholder that's interested. So thank you again for putting that together. And if anyone has a question about the budget, it's always posted on our website. Excellent. There is a motion to approve by Sakoudin, seconded by Bianca. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any new business tonight, so that brings us into other action items. I'd like to welcome Shelley Munson to the podium to go over our staffing allocation guidelines for fiscal year 2025.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. Before you this evening are the staffing allocation guidelines for fiscal year 2025. Each year, the School Board approves staffing allocation guidelines for the following school year. These guidelines are used to determine the number of staff to be allocated to each school and department. These guidelines are also an important component in establishing the next year's budget based on student enrollment counts and other funding factors. This year, there are staffing modifications as we restructure and align our literacy model with the REED Act and to better support our students and staff. With me tonight, some of my fellow cabinet members are here to provide more detail on some of these changes, which are reflected in the staffing guidelines. I'll hand it over to Jeremy.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Sorenson. I'm the Director of Elementary Ed, and I'm here to talk a little bit about some of the structural changes. And I'm going to give some context about the REED Act. Shelley mentioned the REED Act, which will, which is driving some of the changes that we're making. But before I go into this context, I want to make two quick points. We are making changes to align with the REED Act. But in addition, we're making changes because we know we can get better outcomes for our students and our families. We want to better align with best practice. We want to reach a broader number of students. Additionally, we're making robust changes. We've talked a few times about this change from balanced literacy to structured literacy. So there's a wide spectrum of changes, changes. But for tonight's purpose, we're talking about how this impacts staffing. So as I go through this context, keep that in mind. Some of the main components of the REED Act, the first one is, schools are required to use a state-approved screener. We adopted a new screener this year called Fast Bridge, and we did it in the fall, and we're actually in our second benchmarking period right now. So thinking about how we can restructure our staffing to help support, to continue to learn about and implement the screener and use that data as we move forward. Additionally, core curriculum is an area that is impacted. Schools are required to adopt a curriculum that is, follows a structured literacy framework. So we, the state, will actually be identifying five approved curriculums later this week. We have a process in place, and we will be adopting and implementing a new curriculum in the near future. So again, how do we best support that with staff to implement that and get that going in our district? Next is intervention. Alignment with structured literacy, again, our intervention program needs to align with structured literacy. Some of the most notable changes is that we are moving away from some of our current programming, like reading recovery, and we will be developing new intervention programming that aligns with structured literacy. So again, how do we staff and structure it so that we can best support and implement any new intervention programs? And then lastly, professional development. That's a main component of the REED Act, that elementary teachers and then even K-12 teachers working on literacy interventions go through a large number of training. So those are the main components that are driving some of our structural changes. I'm going to hand it over to Steve Schron to talk more specifically about some of those changes.
Thanks, Jeremy. Steve Schron, Director of Teaching and Learning. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. So I'm going to echo what Jeremy's talked about in terms of those comprehensive changes in a variety of areas, and the idea that we want to make sure that we have the support in place to carry, move forward in those areas. So we're in the process of restructuring, aligning our support structure, our approach in our curriculum for both core and intervention. Supporting the implementation will be a new structured literacy core curriculum. And in support of that, an elementary literacy specialist and a team of six literacy coaches. In regards to intervention, as Jeremy mentioned, reading recovery is discontinued. In its place, the new intervention model will serve more students and provide efficiency with a structured literacy intervention curriculum. Supporting that implementation will be district intervention specialist and a team of 19 interventionists, one interventionist full-time at each of our elementary schools. And again, the idea with both of these is to provide consistent and aligned support for teachers with implementing the new structured literacy curriculum and implementing new intervention model and curriculum as well. And I'm going to step aside here and turn it over to Janet Fimmon, our Director of Special Ed, to highlight the special education changes and also provide an overview of how this would look and be structured at each elementary school.
Thank you, Janet Fimmon, Director of Special Education. And as Steve mentioned, we are restructuring core support and intervention support in an attempt to really move forward in a systemic way. We are also restructuring some of our special education support. We will be shifting some FTE, so we will be have, we will have two elementary, two special ed specialists, one elementary and one secondary specialist supporting this work. We're shifting some of our current TOSA positions to support this, this change. We currently, we will also be adding or shifting, and we'll have special education leads K through 12. Currently, we have lead interventionists at the elementary level, and we are expanding to secondary in order to support all of the professional development that will be required for all special educators along with the REED Act and the shift to structured literacy and the instruction that we're supporting and will be moving forward with. As mentioned, these shifts will create alignment and systemic change as well as efficiencies in order to support our staff with all of the, the changes. And then with that, the positions that will be, the positions will be clustered into three buildings. So we'll have clusters of three buildings, and each of those three, each of those building clusters will have a literacy coach, a math coach, a special education lead, and a digital resource teacher. And the goal of this shift is to create alignment with supporting staff across buildings and levels. And now I'm going to turn back over to Director Shelley Munson.
All right. Thank you for that detail. So the exhibit includes several staffing modifications in alignment with this restructured literacy model just described. You will see some of those are just shifts, right? So it goes perhaps from the staffing allocation to district office staffing, again, for that consistency and just a shift in how we're utilizing those staff. There are also some other minor modifications and adjustments made in these guidelines to reflect current allocations and titles, as well as some housekeeping corrections. There are not any changes to classroom allocations. These guidelines have been reviewed by cabinet, and on behalf of administration, I recommend that you approve the fiscal year 2025 staffing allocation guidelines that are just presented. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time, as well as my fellow cabinet members.
Excellent. This is an action item for the board tonight, so before I go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Jackie, seconded by Sakoudin. Are there any comments or questions from the audience? I see one question. If you could just come up to the podium real quick and ask a question. As you're coming up, I'll just read a little bit about our questions during, for agenda items. District stakeholders may address agenda items in the reports, old business, new business, and other action portions of board meetings when recognized by the board chairperson. Speakers are asked to give their name and connection to the district before they begin their comments. Speakers are allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to two minutes. In order to conduct business in a thorough yet efficient manner, the number of people who speak in each agenda item is limited to seven. So just so you know, for, if you, when you come up to speak, there'll be a little, oh, lights on the podium, green, amber, red. Green is when you, we'll start the timer, and amber tells, kind of tells you to wrap up your comments. Red's when we'd like you to conclude your statements.
Not a problem. I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Elise Madaman, and I'm a parent and also a business stakeholder here in the district. My question, just relating, I didn't realize this was on the agenda, is a side-by-side baby comparison of where we are either losing or gaining staff, just knowing within the schools itself, because I do have an elementary, middle, and high schooler. If there is any type of that information, just so we're not losing, you know, really good staff members to other locations, if there is somewhere that that can be found.
Yeah. Good question. Shelley, did you want to address that, or someone else from the team?
Again, there's not a change to that classroom allocation there, but there will be some shift as we're trying to align staff to provide that. So as Janet had shared, kind of that model to, to, to keep that alignment to support in the elementary level, groups of similar schools. So there will be some shift of staff, perhaps with some of that alignment.
Oh, go ahead, Superintendent.
Another comment on that is, we always have some shift, and I think if you're parents or teachers in the community, you know, or you know that, based upon the numbers of students. So I think what we're referencing tonight, we aren't changing any of those basic, how do we allocate staff, other than through the model that you just saw, where we're really changing, shifting some of our staff from one literacy model to a different literacy model.
Excellent. Are there any other questions from the audience? Seeing none, comments or questions for board members? Great. Seeing none, I have a motion by Jackie, a second by Sakoudin to approve. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you very much. All right. The next two action items under other action actually fall on me to present tonight, which doesn't happen very often, so I'm kind of excited. So our first item, or I should say second under other action, is the acceptance of the board member resignation and declaration of a board vacancy. So for those that don't know, maybe you came in late, Superintendent Krieger brought it up once, but our Director Bianca Vernig on this school board was recently elected to the Minnesota House to serve the remainder of Ruth Richardson terms in District 52B. So a big congratulations to Bianca. Let me see here. Director Vernig submitted her resignation from the District 196 School Board with a January 11th effective date. A board member's resignation creates an immediate vacancy. To fill the vacancy, the school board must first accept the resignation and declare the vacancy. So this resolution is to formally accept that resolution and declare the vacancy to the District 196 School Board. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Director Bianca Vernig, effective January 11th, 2024, and declare a vacancy on the school board?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Anna, seconded by Art. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from the school board? All I will say is congratulations again, Bianca, and we look forward to seeing you represent public education at the Capitol. Thank you very much. We have a motion to accept her resignation from Anna, seconded by Art. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. All right. Now that we have officially accepted Bianca's resignation and declared a vacancy, the next item on the agenda is the process for item on the agenda is the process for filling that vacancy. So now that we've approved that vacancy and we have officially a vacant seat, Minnesota Statute 123B dot oh nine, the vacancy must be filled by board appointment at a regular or special meeting and evidenced by a resolution entered in the minutes. The appointment is effective 30 days following adoption of the resolution unless a valid petition to reject the appointee is filed with the school board clerk. Once effective, the appointment continues until election is held. The election to fill the vacancy shall be for the unexpired term. In the past, the school board followed an application and interview process when appointing an individual to fill a board vacancy, that is the recommended process, for filling the current vacancy. The proposed process will look like, starting tomorrow morning, the superintendent's office will make applications to apply for the vacancy available to individuals interested in filling that vacancy. Applications will be available online and in paper by request. Applicants must be residents of the district for at least 30 days. They must be U.S. citizens eligible to vote, at least 21 years old upon assuming office, and they cannot be registered as a convicted sex offender. That application period will again open tomorrow, and it will go through the 19th. On January 19th, at 4:30 PM is the deadline for individuals to submit a completed application online, by mail, or in person to the superintendent's office located at 3455 153rd Street West, Rosemount, Minnesota. Again, to be considered, that application must be received by 4:30 PM on January 19th. On January 22nd, the school board will meet to screen applications and select up to five finalists. Five finalists will be invite, then invited to interview. If five or less people apply to the vacancy, all five or less will be invited to interview. On January 30th, those selected finalists will participate in a panel interview during a public meeting of the school board. Following the interview, the school board will select and appoint the person to fill the vacancy, or if necessary, a second interview will be held on February 1st. The appointment to fill the vacancy must be evidenced by a resolution entered in the minutes and shall be effective 30 days following adoption of the resolution until an election can be held. On March 11th, the newly appointed board member will take the ceremony oath of office at the school board's regular meeting. And on November 5th will be the election to fill the school board vacancy for the rest of Director Vernig's unexpired term. So at this time, is there a motion to approve the proposed process and timeline for filling the school board vacancy as presented and bestow the chairperson with authority to make changes to the process as required by administrative necessity?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bianca and second by Sakoudin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? See one question? Okay, come on up.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Krieger and board. My name is Kim Bauer. I'm a stakeholder, a resident of Apple Valley, and I'm here to remind the board that all students and their parents must be heard by this board, including those with conservative voices and values. I'm asking the board to show support for diversity of thought and prove that you do have the best interests of all constituents by placing someone in the open seat who thinks differently than the incumbent board members. It is clear, based on the last two elections and through door-knocking, that there are many constituents in this district who want a fresh voice, something different than is currently being reflected on the board. It is unfortunate that, that families in this district have to compete with upwards of $70,000 that was used to sponsor the four teachers' union-endorsed candidates. And for those who don't know, this amount is provided by the locals, local teachers' union and state through Education Minnesota. It's wonderful that our teachers are supported. That's important, and they should be. But it is the job of the board to support student education and success. So I ask, why is it important for these sponsors to spend this amount of money to continue promoting just one viewpoint? I also know from speaking with constituents that there are many teachers who don't agree with how the union and Education Minnesota are allocating and using these funds. These teachers and staff feel they have no representation with this board. We are here to ask that you do the next thing right by selecting a, when the next board member is selected, sorry, when selecting the next board member to fill the vacant seat. Be open-minded. Have not only a diverse board, but a board with diversity of thought. Many are tired of being misrepresented or not represented. There has to be balance. That was said earlier this evening. Please prove to us that you all have our best interest in mind and that you can do better. Thank you.
Um, I, the, uh, thank you for your comments. I did hear the one question about the importance. I, I don't have the best answer for that. All I can do is say, anyone who's looking at the financial reports, they are available on the District 196 website, and the campaign finance laws are available on the Minnesota State website as well. Sorry, I can't get too much more specific, but that was the one question I heard, so I wanted to address that. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience? Yes, come on up and...
Thank you. Elise Madaman again. Good evening, board members. My name is Elise Madaman. As a parent and business owner right here in our district boundary, I believe the board has the opportunity to show that they are in fact on this board to make sure all students and families have a voice that deserve to be heard and challenged at times. I'm asking you all to strongly consider one of the candidates that at least 8% of the votes in the last election wanted to have as their representative on the school board. With so many changes happening in our schools that only relate to a very small percentage of students and families, I believe you have already demonstrated that even the smallest group deserves to be represented, heard, respected, and valued. I would ask that there is some serious consideration for the school board candidates that were on the ballot last November. This would show in fact that you are willing to allow all families, that they matter to you as you are supposed to represent a neutral seat and not a one-side-only that has been past practice for the last several years. Thank you so much for your time and consideration of my voice as a parent. I believe that we have a good school district and good teachers, and I just want it to stay that way. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Yes, please come on up.
Do I have to press something? My first board meeting.
Just introduce yourself and state your connection to the district, and then you can start your comments.
Hi, my name is Maria Jose Johnson. I'm a resident. I'm a teacher, but not in this district. I just have questions on what would be the diverse type of thinking, thinking also as a person of color and a minority here in Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? All right. Pretty straightforward. And just again, a reminder to the public, anyone interested in applying to that vacancy can do so on the District 196 website starting tomorrow. There will also be a press release going out detailing all the information that we're voting on tonight as well. With that, there is a motion to approve by Bianca, seconded by Sakoudin. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a six-zero vote. That brings us almost to the end of our board meeting tonight. I'd like to turn it over to any school board members with items they'd like to share.
Oh, can I? Okay.
It wouldn't be a board meeting if we didn't let you figure, finalize your last board meeting with comments. So yes, please, Bianca.
So I just want to thank the community, the parents, the support that I've had when I ran for school board and then for the house seat. It has been an honor. I am sad to leave this extremely diverse board. The parent voice is resounding here. I look forward to advocating for both 196 and now my new district, 197, at the Capitol, both staff, students, the district. It has been, I'm sure, Mary, I have given you some heartburn. I'm sure Mark Stotts has had a little heartburn. I'm sure I will give some people at the Capitol heartburn. But I really do look forward to representing both 196 and the families and voters who elected me and the Eagan area as well, West St. Paul, Mendoza Heights, excuse me, not West St. Paul. Thank you for the opportunity. I've learned a lot, and I look forward to taking that forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other board members with items they'd like to share?
I would like to...
Sakoudin.
First, I just wanted to take a quick minute to congratulate our elected board members and the new board member, Anna Williams, and wanted to also make a comment since is Bianca's last board meeting. Just wanted to say thank you for your service to our board. You have done a lot of great work for our district and our board, and your passion for education really shines through. So you have been a very good advocate to have, and I'm sure you will continue your service because just you move into the state Capitol, you'll be representing our district and our students. Just wanted to say thank you.
Excellent. Any other board members with items they'd like to share? Seeing none, I'll turn over to Superintendent Krieger.
Okay. Talking about all these changes, I'll throw in, I'll end with one of my own. Last week, I announced that my plan to retire at the end of this school year in June so that this board has an opportunity and our community has an opportunity to really conduct a search and hire the next superintendent. It is a lifestyle, not a job, and I don't plan to change that lifestyle for another six months. So I just want to share with my community that I will spend each and every day working to ensure the success of our almost 30,000 students. We're in the midst of big changes, many of which you heard about tonight. It'll take energy and commitment to ensure that those changes impact student growth. I am passionate about public education, grateful for the opportunity to lead a superintendent, and very excited for the next six months.
Thank you very much. With that, that brings us to the close of our meeting. Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is Monday, February 12th, 2023. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Bianca, seconded by Sakoudin. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are officially adjourned.